Gentlemen, Detective Affairs and Planning Commission for February 26, 2014. A roll call, please.
Vice Chair Livey.
Here.
Commissioner Woodmer.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Mr. Tonelli.
Here.
Commissioner Grinley.
Oh. All present. Next item number two is approval of minutes for January 22. Any comments or changes to the minutes?
I don't have any. I can move the minutes as presented.
I'll second. Move the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, thank you.
Public comments. Hearing none. Number four is new business. Introduction of Commissioner Grinley. William, will you give us a brief rundown of what's your...
Okay, let's see. If you want to know the old, you'll go. As many of you know, I've spent the last forty-seven months trying to be the governor's worst nightmare. And that's on the subject cards we were... We are getting there. This... And I'm kind of doing a two-report, commissioners report. The status of the project is that in August 16th of last year, Superior Court Judge ruled that they had certified in November 2011 that they had all the money to go to the first three hundred miles, of which they designated as the initial operating segment, essentially Madera to Silmore. When they had six billion, three billion Fed, uh, three billion Fed, three billion state, and they certified the cost was thirty-one point five. The judge also heard them argue that, well, we will have all of the environmental clearances done at some point. And the judge pointed out that, well, yes, you do have twenty-eight of those three hundred miles done, and the law says you have to have them all done before you can go forward with your planning plan. So the Attorney General, who argues for the California High Speed Rail Commission, went into this... I wouldn't have said it, but anyway, she said, "Your Honor, we have satisfied all of the conditions laid down for us by the legislature. We have never hesitated," which is not true, considering the way I've been there. I'll go there next week for the fifty-fifth, two hearings and hand out papers. But she said, "That is all we need to do." That's basically telling the court, "Up yours." Which Judge Kenny, Michael Kenny leans over, I'll never forget it. He says, "Well, Madam Attorney General, why did you put it on the ballot? In California, ballot initiatives take precedence over any action by the legislature." "Your Honor, that was to inform the voters." Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a non-answer. So he had ruled against them. The governor, that day, called the ruling inconsequential. The chairman of the High Speed Rail Authority called it not important. And yet, the governor, on January 24th this year, filed petition with the California Supreme Court calling the ruling catastrophic. It is now back in the appellate court for we will rehear, my guess is sometime in April, Part One, the same ruling the Judge Kenny made. There are two parts to the trial. They're trying to start... And we'll hear the same arguments. There are no more arguments. Never contested the judge's ruling. They contested his right to rule. All right? To which our lawyer, being very clever, you know him, he's Stu Flashford.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Stu is great.
He's a wonderful lawyer.
He started his arguments on May 31st last year at the first hearing by listing out all of the precedent that made the written and nameless, we sought and got legal, so that when the appellate court heard it, because he knew there was an appeal, that would not have to go past page two or three. All right? And not get droopy eyes. The authority has resisted mightily to go to Part Two, because Part Two is, "Your Honor, here's what the conditions of the voters approved in 2008. Here's what they plan to do now. We can find no resemblance between the two, and under 526A, a section of California law, you can't use the money for A to do Z." They don't want to see that in public. That will be very politically embarrassing, because it shows when since they lied about a fifty-dollar one-way ticket, they lied about a two-hour and forty-minute ride, they lied about the thirty-three billion dollar, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have one huge, beautiful graphic just to put up in front of the courtroom and go one by one, very slowly, because the press catches on very quickly. So that's where we're on that. Okay, that's where we're at now.
What do you do, spare time?
Uh, what do you do? Nothing, actually. I have nothing. Actually, I had the pleasure of serving for, what, about four and a half years on this commission? And because it was just overwhelming amount of work with the High Speed Rail Authority two and a half years ago, when we had no perspective that we would win, that just was taking me out. I have lived in Atherton now forty, nearly forty-three years, in a nice old, big old house. I have been happily married for seven years. I have two kids. I have... I lived in Peru for five years. I did my time in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and the great, great halls of Massachusetts Street Technology. I have a... Went to Masters in Urban Planning, it's so long ago, I can't remember what it is. And I have another degree in architecture from Clemson College, Clemson Agricultural College, where I went, now Clemson University, in South Carolina, where I grew up.
Very good. Thank you, William. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Catch you guys. Delighted to have you back.
I hope you will be at the end of the evening.
Next item is selection of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. With that, I'll open the nominations for Chairman, if you please.
I nominate Phil.
I second.
Oops. Any further nominations?
I nominate Phil.
Nominations, of course, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. Thank you.
Good rest, Professor.
Now, we'll open the nominations for Vice Chair. Nominations, please.
I abstain. I don't know anybody else.
I'd like to nominate Eric.
Is there a second to that?
Sure, second.
I'll move the second, Eric, be Vice Chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I abstain. Actually, I'll vote no.
Congratulations.
But I've got a short straw again.
All right. Commissioners reports, item number five. Eric, anything?
Uh, no.
Mary Beth?
No.
No. Waiting to hear from you.
Yeah, I'll give a quick report on what happened on Monday with the community center advisory committee, met with the HNC, the consultant, on the town master plan, and went over with her and her associate what the presentation to the council may be on March, I think it's the seventeenth, isn't it? Something like that, anyway.
It's September.
And as a result of that, the numbers came out about what the funding goal will be, and I'll let the council hear about that first. But they took four steps. One, to approve, requesting the council approve the tentative master plan, approve not, uh, accept, not approve, I'm sorry, accept the master plan, because it is a master plan, there's likely changes to it. Also, accept and approve going forward was the EIR for the master plan, and again, asked the council to go forward with an RFP to select an architect for the initial design of the master plan itself. And that means that even though this is a master plan, if the architect comes up with some different kinds of things, there's room to change it. And there are several things that probably will show up when the architect gets going. And the fourth thing was to ask the council to approve, to improve continuation of the CCAC through to the complete designs, final design of the town center. Those four were passed, and so they will go to the council for their action at the council meeting. The next meeting of CCAC will be the tenth at four-thirty to go to the final, final for the presentation to the council. That's it.
Sounds like you came out with a plan. That's good.
Yeah, it's not final by many stretch of imagination, but it's looking pretty good.
It's a framework to start.
Yeah, it's coming along. So long as it's moving, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Keep it going. So that's underway. All right, staff reports?
We received a request from Menlo School and Menlo College to stop our work on the EIR for the carton field improvements. They're going to do some more internal discussions on all of the elements of the plan, and then hold some neighborhood meetings before we proceed any further. So that project is currently on hold at the moment.
That means on hold, not ceased as is, but stopped?
We've stopped all our work. And I don't know if, how the project will come back, you know?
Do they give you any idea when they might consider resumption?
They did not give us a timeline.
Along that line, there was some activity before us about what's going on with the current initial use permit, what's happening with enforcement.
Right. Based out of concerns that were raised by the neighbors, a review of the use permit that was issued in 1865 for the field, the city attorney has sent a letter to both parties, the school and the college, letting them know that they do need to comply with those conditions, and they do need to comply with the town's noise ordinance. And so we are doing some ongoing enforcement there. We've received some complaints that the police department are following up on, and that the city attorney's following up on. So we're actively enforcing that.
Well, kind of since it's land use kind of situation, I appreciate, I'm sure the commission would also appreciate comments as we go forward, how it's going over there.
Will we be advised of the neighborhood meetings? Are we able to attend those and kind of get the temperature of the project from, what they have to say at those meetings?
Yeah, let me see how it might be better to have a smaller working group session with the school and the neighbors, rather than kind of open it up for a larger public forum. But let me see, you know, how the project moves forward and what they have in mind if we want to invite commissioners as well. I told them that I would like to attend those meetings, because what I've heard is some misrepresentations between the parties. And so I want to be there to observe that and to at least, you know, give what the city's processes. I'm not going to give any position on whether or not we would support anything, but procedurally, you know, how it would move forward, and I can give some basic code answers. But I really want to be there, like, kind of like what you're saying is, you know, to hear the conversations and, you know, to make sure there's no mistruths being spoken.
Nicely said.
Rusty, Rusty Mowery. The college borders the field. What is the school's role?
The school and the college both own that field. It's a shared use agreement for that one. Yeah, they, when they split the properties, right, they retained the shared ownership of the facility there.
Okay. Is there any, just a quick question? Is there any more progress or changes on the Little Lake field or anything? Is there anything on that?
Not, yeah, not since the last meeting. Little Lake has not submitted plans for staff review yet.
Okay, great.
There's a lot of discussion about what's going to go forward.
Good.
Still.
There should be.
Okay, complete staff reports. Next, pardon me?
As the Brits would say, "It's a controversy."
The other thing that I know is that even though the use permit restricts practice from Sunday, last Sunday it was practice.
Right, and that's, we received a complaint about that practice. Police Department is enforcing as well as city attorney.
So they're just like...
Yeah. But I think, I think the process that it revealed here is that we meant it, so that's good. I like that.
Yeah, they heard us.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, I think it was helpful to have that initial meeting.
Yeah.
For the college, at least, to hear some good comments. So I think it was helpful.
Okay, anything further on staff reports? Hearing none, public hearings, item number seven, special structure permit ninety-two Inglewood Lane, special structure permit to locate pool in the front yard setback. Staff report?
Thank you. The applicant deserves a special structure permit to locate the pool sixty feet from the front property line. As you're aware, accessory structures are required to be thirty feet behind the front line of the main residence, or a hundred and twenty feet from the front property line, whichever's closer. And then the code also has a provision for special structure permit from Planning Commission to have just up to sixty foot setback. So that's what's proposed. It's in that side yard. When you did your site inspection, you know it's pretty well screened from the front as well as from the side property lines. Kevin Keelty, our town arborist, did make a site inspection. He walked exactly where the pool would be, and his opinion is it would not impact any heritage trees. And he also had some thoughts on how they could do the construction staging and how they would access the pool. So he's working with the designer on the next stage for that. We also did receive a letter from the adjacent neighbor indicating, and I did speak with her at the counter, indicating that she's okay with this location. I think she prefers it closer to the front property line, because it lines up a little bit with her garage, rather than it being farther back, where it would kind of more conflict with her private enjoyment of her yard, was the comment she made to me. So I don't have any further comments. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions?
I have a one question, and that was just the location of the pool equipment. It sounded like it was on the neighbor's, neighbor's side of the pool, but it sounded like it was on, even though there'd be mitigation of the noise, it sounded like it was closer to the neighbor than the pool itself.
Yes, it is correct. It's ten feet off the side property line shared with the neighbor, and it's towards the rear of the property.
Okay.
Any further questions?
I just had one question about the letter from Cynthia, and that had to do with, I understand that they prefer this location because it lines up with their garage, but in the middle of the letter there, in the third paragraph, as a general observation, we would strongly prefer a different location for the pool. So I'm kind of confused at what she's trying to say here. Did you get any clarification on that? Because at one point, we'd strongly prefer a different location for the pool.
Well, yeah, I think she, you know...
In general.
Would like it on the other side of the property. But if it was to line up on this side of the property, she'd prefer it closer to the front than the rear.
A comment. I know the Yawkes property very well. My daughter used to house it for them, and we'd go over and have picnics. All along that fence that they share is structures and landscaping from the Yawkes. Their house is actually seventy, eighty feet away from that. So noise from pool equipment is where I was told it would be located, far past the jacuzzi, so to speak, with not longer than that.
Okay. Any further comments? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant representative here?
Yes.
Comments?
Um, I don't, I would just like to answer your questions.
And give us your name, please.
Oh, Shannon Bell. I'm the designer and next give contract.
Thank you.
And I'm just here to answer your questions. Basically, we determined that this was the optimum for the owners in terms of their, you know, they wanted to keep it closer to the house, which would be good for the neighbor, and also just so that they can enjoy it. And the rest of the, the rest of the property is really all mature landscaping and complete, you know, it's been done for thirty years, you know, trees and patios and everything. So they, they really didn't want to disturb the existing heritage trees and landscaping. So this was kind of the only place left.
Any questions, Ms. Bell? None?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the audience like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Eric.
Your Honor, I don't have any issues with this. It sounds like we do the right, the staff work looks on it, looks good, and I'm glad the neighbors are at least comfortable with the site, and so I don't have anything on this one that I can follow up on, I don't think. Unless you, you all have something that I didn't see. Thank you, Eric. Eric Bell?
Um, I went by the property and took a look at the location, and then I went back and I Googled the area, and it actually, there are two other pools that are close, proximated to this pool. So from that perspective, I thought it was a good use of the land, because of pools all being centered there and no neighbor disturbing another neighbor more than, you know, than is required. So with that, with our loophole of requiring, allowing accessory structure to be, you know, within the front set, the sixty foot from the front, it works for me.
Yeah, the Google Earth thing is pretty cool, because it gives it an area view that we never got before.
Right. Paul, comment?
No, I used that too, and I thought everything looked pretty good, and I really value William's observation on this. That really comes in handy, so.
William?
No comment.
Okay. I visited the property on Monday, I saw the location, looked at the screening on along the fence and where the pool equipment will be, with the one caution that the owner must comply with two things. One, our noise ordinance, and two, the hours of operation for pool equipment, which I believe are eight AM to eight PM. And was that...
Eight PM to eight AM.
Eight... No, it's either we're on daytime, eight AM to PM.
Okay.
Well, just the last, don't specify the hours.
Hours, anyway.
Just specify the ordinance.
Okay. Any further comments? If not, may I have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission to put a special structure permit at ninety-two Inglewood Lane, based on the findings and for the reasons and then we're ready to end the staff report.
Move the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved by five to nothing. If you have a comment or wish to appeal, you have ten days from the day's date.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item, number eight, is amending municipal code section regarding athletic facilities. You recommend we turn this to the council.
If you are ready, certainly, and your pleasure. What we've done is incorporated comments that we received from the Planning Commission at its previous meeting, and with regards to changing the definition to kind of be a little more specific on the breadth of the athletic courts and any other athletic facilities. So something else might pop up that we're not thinking of right now, so we have that in the definition. And then as well as have some more specific development standards for athletic courts, and this is specifically in response to escape or ram, some BMX track, but we've also included batting cages that we see popping up more. And I had some good comments from Commissioner Woodmer today, and that prompted us to give you kind of the complete chapter, so you can see the changes within that. And then also on the development standards section on number eight, where we have batting cages listed, we also want to add driving ranges or similar types of structures. So if there's going to be an enclosure for, you know, small driving range, that it also meets this criteria. So I thought those were good suggestions, and we would love to incorporate this one. So happy to take any comments that you have. If you're comfortable with this and you would like to move it forward, you could recommend it up to the city council. If you would like to see further changes, it brought back, we can certainly do that as well. It's not time sensitive, so whatever you'd like to proceed.
Is there any, any way that this could be retroactive, or, you know, because there are some...
Unfortunately, no.
It's, there's no wording that we can put in that.
You might amend it down.
Well, what about, like, a review, you know, a review of the structures after so many years, or something? Is that...
Well, it cannot be retroactive to any legally installed structure.
Yes.
If there's a batting cage that's in an inappropriate location today, we would have them move that, and when they move it, it has to comply with the ordinance in effect at the time they move it. So there may be some situations that they're just non-conforming today, that we would then get into compliance.
Anything that's legal today, this cannot retroactively apply. It's, you know, it's kind of...
William?
Qualification, never a problem. Paragraph seven, which says, "But in no case shall any portion of the ram slash truck exceed three feet in height above average natural grade." I don't remember clearly what average natural grade meant.
Yeah, it's defined in the code, and it's what we use to measure the building heights. So we're taking, you know, multiple points around the area of the structure and then averaging that out and, right, getting that slope, so.
Thank you.
It's easier than kind of calling out natural grade, because it may change, so the average is helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All in?
No, I'm reading through this, and I know that we included everything that we talked about. And as I was reading through it, I was thinking, we can overanalyze this as well. I mean, there's, there's a lot of other things we can include, and where do you stop?
Right.
I think this is fairly inclusive, and I was trying to kind of pick my own brain as to, all right, are there any holes in this? I couldn't see any, but I am kind of curious to, you know, the opinions of the other commissioners as to if we're missing anything. That's the only thing I'm afraid of, without being too over-analytical.
Okay. I've got some comments. I think there's too much in here. For example, if I have a horseshoe pit, can I put a horseshoe pit in and get a permit?
It does not need a permit, but it has to comply with this code section, so it needs to meet the setback requirements.
Okay. Can I put, can I mow my lawn in the front a little shorter and put a putting green out there? Just lawn?
You cannot use it as a putting green.
Why not?
Because it's an athletic facility, and it needs to meet the setback requirements.
Okay. Can I put putting green in the backyard?
Sure.
And then roll it up, make a little hill, and do all that in the back?
Sure.
As long as it's not three feet.
That's my next one.
As long as you don't pull out your driver.
Okay. There could be a little structure.
Robbie Jones is going to come. Anyway, interestingly, in our street, the neighbor down the street had a major construction job underway some time ago, and dug pool, moved dirt around, so forth and so on. And I guess they got tired of wearing the dirt out, so they left it in piles. And piles are about, there's four, there's three of them. Pile up piles are probably ten feet in diameter and five or six feet high. And they have a lawn up over the top of them, they're lovely little mounds. Is that just considered landscaping?
It would be considered landscaping. It may be something, though, that would trigger some review for grading and drainage perspective to make sure that it's stable, because at some point, you know, you can only pile dirt so high and then it's going to fall. So it may trigger that kind of review, but if there's no active use of it, planning wouldn't be involved in it.
But the minute they put a BMX bike on top of it...
Correct.
You're in. That's their clause.
I told Charles a little early for that, so we'll see what happens. And the other question, I guess, would be the bocce ball court. Same thing as the horseshoe court.
No permit required, but it needs to meet the setback requirements.
But I can't play bocce ball in the front yard.
No.
That's a joke.
It's not a court, I'm just playing with the lawn. And I play with the play.
Okay.
Out there?
Well, that's not a permanent structure, so you might...
Technically...
I mean, you could just run around and have fun.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to kill all fun.
She wants to not see your fun.
Yeah.
Technically...
Hide your fun.
Technically, most bocce ball courts are like gravel, gravelous grounds rather than grass, so.
Gosh, gosh.
Yeah, but the intent of this is to help people understand the range of things that are covered. And so I agree with you, there's a possibility here that by putting so much in, we ended up, you know, opening up...
Yeah, no, I get that.
Yeah, but that also then took into account, but I'm glad we got the John Madden clause in case he moves into town, we know it's the bocce courts. But you're right, I mean, at what point do we end up having too much in that makes you feel like, well, that means that these aren't required, right?
Exactly.
I think that's what I was trying to...
And, you know, I thought we missed one of the big fields, it should be a football field in there somewhere. Soccer, lacrosse, and other fields.
Yeah.
Other fields.
Yeah, it does, remember, it does apply townwide, so these requirements would apply athletic court to schools.
I thought the other condition that worked for me was this specification of who gets gets to use it, the owner and the, you know, visitors, and not for anything else, because if it's a good enough, like a BMX course, then you, then you start talking about regional finals and things like that from a, hey, I've got a court, why don't you use mine? I know, tough thing, so I like that a lot.
Well, what's the commission's consideration at this point? Let it go the way it is?
Yeah, I'm okay with the way it is, just the idea that it's so specific helps, helps it, that if we get somebody come in here with a really crazy idea for a triplex tennis, table tennis court, then we'll talk about how to...
If that's the case, any more comments by commissioners? None? May I have a motion, please?
I'll move the, that we, that we draft ordinance, that we deliberately send it to the council at this point, is that what we're doing? All right, I will move that we, that we move this ahead, approve to, for the council to approve.
Move to second.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? If none, the recommendation is accepted, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to appeal, why, you have ten days. And the next item is number nine. The ordinance adding municipal code section and so forth, density bonus. Yes?
It says something about both, excuse me, both athletic facilities and definitions. And are we making any umbrage with definitions? Because it says seventeen forty and seventeen...
Correct. So the change to definition would include a description of additional courts, because right now I think it's a little limiting. So that's the, on page two, it's that top section of the staff report.
Carries over to the other. We don't have to recommend both of the areas.
Oh, it's, I put both changes in one ordinance. Yeah, you can change multiple code sections in one ordinance. Yes, thank you.
Okay, ordinance adding athletic municipal code section seventeen point fifty-eight, density bonus, recommendation to continue to another time.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I just wasn't ready with some revisions. I'm a little concerned about this code section and want to see how we can really limit it. So I did have a conversation with the city attorney the other day on some possible options, and I think we had some good ideas. If the next agenda's not too full, I think I can bring it back to you at your next agenda for discussion.
So a motion would be to continue off the agenda...
Yeah, I'll re-notice it.
Until it's so noticed.
Yeah.
Is there a motion of that effect? William?
I agree with you, motion's of that effect.
I'll second.
It's of that effect.
Yep. Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Nope. Okay, we'll complete that one. Number ten, consideration amendment of setback requirements to an accessory structure, accessory building and the main building.
Thank you. So we have a request from a local builder to take a look at this code section. Currently, the code requires that there be an eight-foot separation between any main building and detached accessory structure or building, as well as eight-foot separation from other structures. So examples would be main building, your garage, if it's detached, needs to be at least eight feet away. You can connect it from, with a breezeway, but it has to be separated at least eight feet. That was initially added to the code, I believe, for some fire safety access so they can get around all the structures. When the code was updated in two thousand nine, we further defined accessory buildings and accessory structures. I think it was previously kind of lumped together and it got separated out. So this eight-foot separation also applies to accessory structures. For example, your tennis court needs to be eight feet away from the house. An arbor with a raised structure needs to be eight feet away from the tennis court for the pool. If you have a pool and spa that aren't all together, they should be eight feet away from each other. Pool house needs to be eight feet away from the spa. So we're getting a lot of interest for these fabulous outdoor spaces, you know, they're really improving them, and I know a lot of outdoor barbecue kitchens and nice seating areas with fire pits. So a lot of times they want to attach it to the house or it comes out as a wing. So I say, okay, if you're going to attach it to the house and it's raised, you either need to meet the main building setbacks, or you got to have it separate eight feet away, and then you can consider it an accessory structure. So, you know, get some concern, get some pushback on that, but that's the code and that's how we're enforcing it. So this one individual is asking that you take a look at that, and maybe you eliminate that separation for structures, but you maintain it for buildings, and the building again is like a garage or pool house. Or you exempt something like the smaller fireplace or, you know, barbecue wings, kitchens, something like that, to give them some flexibility. So I just brought it up for your consideration. If it's something you'd like to take a look at, what I could do at the next meeting is put that resolution of intent to initiate a code amendment, and then we could go through the process of updating that code section, or you can choose not to proceed, and it will end there.
All right, thank you. William, comment? Start with you.
I can see both sides of the argument. I would, I would defer to you to do an analysis of some pros and cons and to bring that forward to us in a subsequent meeting so that maybe those of us who can be one or the other can see perhaps strongly one is better than the other.
Paul, any comment?
Actually, went out into my backyard and started measuring things around a little bit, and I have a kind of a smaller lot, I'm only a quarter of an acre, but I do have a sizable hot tub back there, I have a fire pit, and I have a little bit of a, not a full-on kitchen, but cooking area. And at first, reading through this, I thought, okay, that's a reasonable request, but after going out and measuring and looking at the difference between, say, six feet or five feet and eight feet, and trying to imagine the different activities going on, I'm wondering if making a decision here would just be splitting here, so it kind of got me seeing the other side of the thing that William's talking about. And I'd be willing to open it up to discussion among us if that's how the commission feels, but at the same time, I can see it being kind of picking nits.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
I'm particularly concerned about reducing the setback when it comes to fire pits, especially near swimming pool and wet areas. I mean, who hasn't seen their kids sliding as they got out of the pool? And, you know, if it's eight feet, then, then if somebody slips and falls, then they're going to miss the five-foot pit, but if it's four feet, there's going to be a problem. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm really not interested in changing the law for the convenience of a, of a doorway.
Thank you. Hey, that's it? Eric?
Yeah, I agree with you on safety, for sure, and I think that the, the thing I need to understand is the purpose of the, of their regulation is designed, one, for safety, and two, for neighborliness, or whatever that would be. And so the one portion of it that I can see a couple of design issues with people just playing with the rule, right, in terms of like, well, I'll attach it and I'll attach it to the building, and then that may not be as good a design idea to have barbecue attached to the building at that spot, you know? So I guess, I guess if we were to open it up, and I don't think that we need to necessarily, we'd have to have some pretty good components for what we're really trying to solve for. So safety would be one, and, and what else would we be solving for in this? Setback from the, from the neighbor's yard is seventy-one, but if there's anything beyond that, then I'd need a little more definition.
I guess my comment is this, we only have one person who's complaining about this, and there's seven thousand residents. Maybe we got to wait until we see what happened with some more before we can go forward with this. So I, I'm, I'm content to leave it at this. So do we need, do we need a motion, or do we want...
I think it would be, yeah, I think it would be good to have a motion.
To, 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 or to react, to decide not to...
You could take no action on the revisions.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I will, I will take no action on the regulation of the ordinance.
My second.
Okay.
That was a popular one.
Move to second, take no action on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose, no opposition. So that one is setback. The next item is number eleven, adjournment.
Is this at World Market?
It's pretty close.
It'll catch up to us at some point.
World Records, twenty-sixth.
Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next meeting, it could be tough to be... March twenty-sixth. Thank you all for attending.
All right.
Thank you.